I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
All the persons present.
Present.
Hayes, Booth, Otto.
Present.
Pat, Wayman.
Present.
Mayor Sadathwaite.
Present.
We have a forum. First item on our agenda this evening, as approval of a minutes of previous meeting, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion, additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? We'll go on to petitions and communications. Anybody would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes? You'll fill out one of the white cards at the back of the room and bring it up. You'll have a chance to do so. Paul Kaufheimer of 703 East Illinois on the at-large seats. Paul, if you would come up to the microphone here in the front. If we're going to get a musical present, a musical petition tonight, huh? That's great. Any questions for Paul?
I have more. The statement. I have some time left.
Yeah, go ahead and sit down.
Oh, I, wait on it. "Neighbors and citizens and members of the council, the current smear campaign against the ethics of our progressive representatives is, in my view, the last straw. I am here tonight to report that I have heard firsthand accounts in private of Mayor Todd Sadathwaite's use of harassment and verbal abuse, physical intimidation bordering on assault, and even the threat of blackmail in his dealings with Urbana citizens and elected officials. Now, my heart goes out in sympathy to those who've suffered from these abuses. I understand their desire for anonymity, and I keep their identities in strict confidence. But I want to urge you who've been victimized in these ways, and I'm pretty sure you can hear my voice, to step forward, make a statement for the record, and call for Mayor Todd Sadathwaite's resignation as soon as possible. That's all I have to say."
Questions? Thanks. Any other petitions and communications this evening? Council members. On to reports of standing committees, since there's no old business. Mr. Hayes, I believe you're the chair this evening.
Item one, committee of the whole. We're dealing with A, B, C, D grants management. We'll take A by itself since it has a separate funding from the other three. Orderance number 2004-09-121. An ordinance approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement with historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association. Project number 04-05-01. Move approval.
Second.
You're moving second.
It's been, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shanaweth.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Ms. Pat.
Yes.
Ms. Wayman.
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Hayes?
We could take B, C, and D in anonymous fashion if it's okay.
Action?
Pardon me, Danielle's got her head.
Ms. Shanaweth?
If we could take them separately, I have a, I would like to abstain on C, so if we could take B separately.
Okay.
C and D, thanks.
Separately. Ordinance number 2004-09-122. An ordinance approving a City of Urbana Neighborhood Organization Grant Agreement, United Citizens and Neighbors. Project number 04-05-02. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor, please, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shanaweth.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Ms. Pat.
Yes.
Ms. Wayman.
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Hayes?
Item one, C. Ordinance number 2004-09-123. An ordinance approving a City of Urbana Neighborhood Organization Grant Program Agreement, Ecological Construction Laboratory. Project number 04-05-03. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shanaweth?
I abstain to a potential perceived conflict of interest.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wayman?
Yes.
Motion carries with four ayes. Uh, Mr. Hayes?
Item one, D. Ordinance number 2004-09-124. An ordinance approving a City of Urbana Neighborhood Organization Grant Program Agreement, Each Street Development Corporation. Project number 04-05-04. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shanaweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wayman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Hayes?
Item number two. Resolution number 2004-09-019R. A resolution revising a resolution establishing procedures for approval of annexation agreements for the purpose of sanitary sewer connection. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Mr. Hayes?
Item number three. Ordinance number 2004-09-125. Ordinance amending section 1-18 of the Code of Ordinances. Pay by mail, scheduled cleanup, animal ordinance, garbage containers required, taxicab ordinance. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shanaweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wayman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five ayes. Uh, Mr. Hayes?
Those are all the items from the committee of the whole. The committee will meet next Monday, the 27th of September, 7:30 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Uh, reports of officers. Uh, Mr. Walden, did you have anything this, this evening?
Oh, yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, I don't know if anyone attended the farmer's market Saturday, but that, I think that was probably the largest one that we had in, in the history. It was just huge. The Urbana Park District was there with a small petting zoo, and they had cooking demonstrations, and it was really, really successful. And, um, the UBA, in conjunction with, with Lincoln Square, has announced that they're going to continue on the square, uh, farmer's market at the square from November 20th to December 18th. And that'll be on Saturdays indoors at Lincoln Square. So, um, that's just been decided, so we'll have that indoors again for, for this year, so that's a positive occurrence. Also, Kathy Larson wanted me to remind anyone that may be listening tonight that October 18th is Pumpkin Fest, and that's been quite of a popular event. We get a lot of calls on that, surprisingly. So, uh, that's coming up on October 18th. Also, I wanted to, uh, inform council members that the Third Annual International Beer and Chili Cookoff will be October 9th from 3 to 8 p.m. The location is different this year. Um, you'll, you'll have a, an agenda item later on in, in terms of a temporary liquor license, but, uh, due to a conflict with another event downtown car show, that's going to be moved, uh, to the parking deck. So, so folks looking for the international beer tasting event in Chili Cookoff, it'll be, uh, near Main Street and downtown. So, that's coming up. Um, while we're on events, uh, we did meet with the new director of UBA. Uh, Mary Dennis is, is now on board, and hopefully maybe we'll have some, uh, time to have her communicate directly with council members and get sort of an update. She gave me a brief update on the success of Sweet Corn Festival, and was, uh, despite the rain, uh, the attendance exceeded, uh, all years previously, which is kind of surprised me. She gave me a little statistical rundown on it. Uh, she had over 40,000 persons in attendance, uh, they sold around 20,000 years of corn, and that included 455 pounds of butter. Just a couple of updates on projects. Um, you may have noticed the large sign at Michelle's Bridal next door. Um, they will be relocating. Um, the, the good news is, we were able to keep them in Urbana, and they're locating up near the O'Brien Development, and that's under construction. If you drive by Fronty Road, you'll see that's under construction, but they needed much larger facility to handle their successful business in Urbana, so that's located up along the interstate, and now that's underway. I did get a, um, indication from O'Brien this afternoon regarding their project, just as sort of an update. Uh, they did finish up on their financing on the project, which is good, and, um, they plan to be back under construction in October. And I just do, I do want to read the, the email I received from them. They asked me to pass on, it just says, "I want to thank you and the mayor and the council for your patience with this ambitious project. It's taken longer to get done, but we want to make sure it's structured in a way that works for all of us. Without all of your support, this project would have never been undertaken. We want this new facility to be a showcase for North Urbana. I think you will all be proud when it's finally finished. Thanks again for all your kindness and patience. Jim Turner, uh, general manager, O'Brien Auto Park." So, just sort of an update there of what's going on. Couple other things you also have on your agenda tonight, uh, the revisions to Tatman's project Prairie Leans. I don't know if you've been out there, but that's, uh, with, it's quite a sea change taking place, um, in that location off of Colorado with, with the earthwork and everything. I mean, it looks tremendously different than it has in the past, and, uh, and as you know, there's around 100 units or so of new residential, and most of that will be senior-oriented. But that's under construction now, and certainly makes a, a big difference in the way things look. Um, that, kind of a segue in, you have some information there. Did you want to touch on that, um, information on Sunny Crest? Um, before we do, just one, one additional item. We do have dates for our next Sunny Crest Business Meeting, Sunny Crest Area Business Meeting, and that's September 29th from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. We don't have a location yet, but as soon as we have a location, I'll inform all the council members. I know some of you like to attend that, so pass that on to you, Mayor.
Well, in an attempt to decide what kind of services people want to see out in the Sunny Crest area, uh, we're putting on a couple of surveys, um, that are included at your desk tonight. One is to residents of Urbana, and, uh, this is going to be sent, I think, to what, 1,200 or 1,500 residents? Is that right?
It's the same group.
Our residents. And, um, so you can see it asks, uh, what kind of shopping do they do, how far do they like to drive, just a, a typical business survey of what, uh, uh, so we get an idea of what kind of services and goods that people would like to be able to, uh, have access to in the southeastern Urbana area. Uh, the other one is a business survey, uh, sent out to the businesses in the area, um, asking, uh, some, uh, asking for some demographics of their customers and what kinds of things, uh, might help to, uh, make them more successful. So, we're sending these out, hopefully we'll be able to get a feel for, um, what, uh, kinds of, uh, businesses we should be targeting out in that area as we undertake the effort to, uh, try to fill some of the vacancies out there. So that's going on right now. I have a couple other announcements, um, there are a couple of meetings, uh, I think both of these are by COUATs, which is the Champagne-Urbana Urbanized Area Transit System. And one is a public meeting, uh, which is, takes place tomorrow from 6:30 to 8:00 at TK Wendell's, uh, and that is in regard to the Illinois 130 High Cross Road Corridor Study. Uh, that's something that, um, we got a grant for, uh, several months ago, and we'll be doing, uh, that public meeting tomorrow evening. And then a week from tomorrow is the Long Range Transportation Plan Open House, and that is Tuesday, September 28th, 4:30 to 7:00, on the fourth floor of the Illinois Terminal Building in downtown Champaign. So, if anybody's interested in those, uh, transportation planning issues, uh, those are a couple of public meetings you could attend. Anything else on your staff report this evening? Not, we'll go on to new business. We have a few items on our new business this evening. Uh, first is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois to add section 9-10 interim development ordinance, creating a 365-day moratorium on outdoor advertising sign structures. This is Plan Case 1907-T-04. Uh, Ms. Tyler?
This is a second stage of a basically four-phase project. The first was a, started with the resolution passed August 16th that imposed a temporary moratorium on OESS or billboards until the interim development ordinance could be prepared. Uh, what you have before you this evening is the interim development ordinance. Next will be the hard work of preparing a text amendment to readdress billboards in Urbana and the zoning ordinance, and then finally will be implementation. The, um, interim development ordinance, or IDO, would limit the issuance of permits for new billboards for a period of up to 365 days or a year, uh, but, uh, would supersede the current zoning regulations for billboards but not affect other sign regulations. We talked, uh, at the time in August when resolution was passed about the increase in the number of applications for billboards that had been received, and a very significant increase recently since our last, um, update effort expired in 2002, and, uh, just a higher level of activity and proliferation of billboards, as well as an increase in, um, concerns about placement of those billboards, and, uh, concerns about how these would affect some of our redevelopment efforts, um, for example, Cunningham Avenue, University Avenue. Also talked about some of the, uh, concerns related to the overlapping jurisdiction with IDOT near I-74, and, um, some instances, this has resulted in billboards placed lower in the same visual plane as other freestanding signs, and some, uh, concerns and complaints from businesses in the area. This would be another area that the, um, IDO could address in the review. Purpose of the IDO would be to, um, make sure that we keep within the overall purpose and intent of our comprehensive sign regulations, which have full block concerns on reducing congestion of land and space, preserving and protecting property values, establishing reasonable standards for use of signs in order to maintain and encourage business activity and development, and protecting and enhancing the physical appearance of a community and scenic value of the surrounding areas. Um, other concerns to be addressed by the IDO would be, um, upholding the intent of the sign regulations, consistency with the city's others, other pertinent policy documents such as our comprehensive plan and redevelopment plans, as well as recognizing relevant case law invested property rights interests. List a number of items that the IDO should address during the time period of the moratorium. These include the advantages of cap-and-replace type restrictions or limitations in the total number of allowable billboards, changes to the spacing limits for billboards. Those are currently set along the roadways where they're allowed at 300 feet, imposing potentially minimum height for billboards, or, uh, uh, minimum deviation requested versus actual build heights. Resolution of issues posed by overlapping IDOT regulations, consideration of new technologies for billboard display such as trivision messaging, gain consistency with our comprehensive plan and redevelopment plans, potential treatment of billboards as principal uses, promoting procedures, improvements to our existing landscape and appearance regulations, impact of billboard placement on business visibility, site development potential, and others on regulations. In addition to this, that was, um, requested by the Plan Commission was to look at the square footage limitations, the area limitations for billboards. So that was added. The approach would really be a very technical approach, and would be a combination of effort between the legal division and community development with, um, expert, um, assistance by those familiar with the, with the industry and some of the case law that pertains to it. The boundaries are the same boundaries that, um, in which OESSs are permitted under the zoning ordinance, again, the duration would be up to one year. There are some variations or exceptions that would be allowed. Those billboards that have previously been approved under, um, certain standards, including those that might be in an approved development agreement or annexation agreement, some allowance for replacement, allowance for repair in hardship cases. This was, uh, been put together, the IDO has been put together as a text amendment ordinance, and is being recommended for approval by the Plan Commission. Are there any questions?
Any questions, yes, Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I just have one on the, um, the issue of hardship. It says that the zoning administrator may authorize the issuance of a permit when owner of the property can demonstrate that disallowing such a permit would eliminate any reasonable use of the property. What, in that context, does the property mean the lot on which the billboard is located?
I would take it to mean that. I really don't anticipate this occurring at all, but it was something that we've had previously, and IDO's and was recommended by our local staff.
I'm trying to imagine how there could be no reasonable use of a property if it didn't have a billboard on it. Unless it were property, unless it weren't, it were a piece of property that wasn't a buildable lot? Is that, is that what you have in mind?
Potentially, yeah. Just some kind of remainder piece, just an anticipated situation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Otto?
Um, one of the issues I'm, uh, interested in is looking at, uh, what we can do to protect our downtown from further encouragement by billboards and discouraging or encouraging, uh, those that are there to, uh, to leave the downtown area, particularly thinking of the one on the corner of Cunningham and Main, I think is a, uh, a blight on downtown. Um, that was built relatively recently. I don't want to act in bad faith. I know that that was put up as part of a deal to get space for the courthouse, which was important to downtown Urbana. Um, but at the same time, I'd like to make sure that, uh, more art put up if we can prevent it, and if we can encourage that one, uh, to leave after a reasonable period of time, I'd like to figure out how to do that, uh, as well. I'm not sure exactly how to, uh, phrase that, um, in terms of proposing an amendment to, um, the ordinance, but I'd put it into the wherays as, um, some kind of a clause about, uh, protecting and beautifying downtown, or, uh, is that something you could bring back next week when, well?
I think that we could, no, we do have a downtown strategic plan, so I think if we needed to find it within all the goal statements, it could fit within there. Um, there are some areas, like Vine Street north of Main is still eligible, you know, currently eligible for billboards, and some people might consider University Avenue would be part of downtown as well, but, um, so I think that would fit within the parameters of what we're considering. We want to do a, for a broad review, and we do want to evaluate billboard placements as they relate to, um, our plans, including the strategic plan.
Okay. Um, would it just be appropriate to make it explicit in the, uh, the statement of purpose? It should be, uh, section 910A, there's a number of paragraphs, we should add a paragraph, uh, nine, uh, review the impact of existing billboards, uh, on, uh, downtown and, uh, appropriate, uh, controls on further development of billboards in the downtown area. I'll go ahead and, uh, move that amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion? Yes.
I think it makes sense to look at the impact of, um, the, the signs in downtown Urbana or around downtown Urbana. It's one of the areas that is, we tried to protect last time, and I think actually back to 1980, when the original consent decree was, was signed, uh, was to, to try and have this sort of area around downtown Urbana, to have as few of these outdoor advertising sign structures as possible, and keep those to the outskirts. Um, as Mr. Otto recognized, there was this compromise agreement and need to, to, to keep the courthouse downtown, we had to move and agree to the, uh, the outdoor advertising sign structure, we moved to, to Vine Street and Main. But I do think it makes sense to see if there's a way to move it. My guess is, for the, those that are currently, the, the one that Mr. Otto has, um, discussed, as well as other ones that we see on Broadway, um, just south of University, and then I think there's also on Way, south of, just south of University, that will have to, uh, someone would have to purchase those signs or reimburse whoever, the property owner, for those signs, or the, and, and also deal with the huge financial, um, costs of, of purchasing that, the signed contract. But, um, I think it's good to review, to review that, and I'd also like to see, um, you know, we're in a different time now than we were actually even two years ago when we looked at the sign, the outdoor advertising sign structure, because we're no longer under, um, the settlement agreement that was imposed in, or that we had, that the city entered into in 1980. And so I think this is also an opportunity to make this a very tight, um, sign structure ordinance that, that really doesn't allow for such an increase in growth as, as we've seen at a, at such a startling rate, um, over the last year or two. Uh, and I hope that, um, legal staff will be able to dedicate the time necessary to look at, um, what other cities in Illinois have done to really, um, to meet the parameters of the law, but also, um, meet the interest in protecting, um, the businesses and, and the people of Urbana. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I support the amendment, but I, I just want to point out that the, the concern has grown to be far more than the aesthetics of downtown, and even in parts of the city where one might think that, um, it's not as important, say, as downtown, to be concerned about what the, what the, the view is of, of the sky and, and area immediately above businesses, we're finding that billboards are hurting Urbana businesses, and that is also an important reason why we should be looking at this, because it's not, uh, it's not terribly beneficial to the city to have billboards. We don't, the, the public doesn't get a lot from them, and if they're hurting businesses and they're aesthetically, um, undesirable, then I don't even know why we have them, except to the extent that the Supreme Court says we, we have to. And I, and I hope that what comes out of this is, uh, a restriction on billboards to the fullest extent that is legally possible.
Further discussion? Mr. Otto?
I guess I would say I'm not, uh, not normally a person to advocate, uh, a tax increase. I know there are restrictions on outright bans of billboards, but one of the things staff might want to consider as part of the review process is, uh, what taxes can be placed on billboards, um, so that... on billboards so that they're discouraged from locating in areas where they're not appropriate, and there's some form of compensation to the public in the form of reduced tax persons elsewhere for some of the impositions that they make on Urbana businesses and citizens.
Okay, any further discussion? There's no further discussion. But we've got the main motion that has been amended, or was moved with the amendment. So, this is the main motion. Will the court please call the roll?
No. We need to vote on the amendment. We haven't done it yet.
All in favor of the amendment? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Back to the main motion. If there's no further discussion on the main motion, will the court please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. And if the council will indulge me and move back to item one, the clerk does not have on record, and actually because it didn't happen, we did not have a main motion. All we had was the motion to amend, and so there wasn't a main motion on the floor at the time.
I move approval. Second.
Okay, so that's a motion for item one under new business. Ms. Otto, did you want to restate your motion for amend?
Let me see if I can remember, because I didn't write it down. Okay, so the motion to amend is in Section 910A, paragraph nine, review the impact of OASSs, sorry, review the impact of existing OASSs on downtown, and methods of reducing the impact of future development of OASSs on the downtown business area.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend. Any discussion on the amendment? Discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The main motion, any discussion? Sign no discussion. Will the court please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five ayes. And next under new business is item two, an ordinance approving a revised planned unit development of a PUD Prairie Winds development, south side of Colorado Avenue, approximately 394 feet east of Vila Road. This is Plan Case 1871-A-03. Mr. Kowalski?
Thank you. This case comes to you from the September 9th Plan Commission meeting. They had a public hearing on the proposed revision. Just a quick background, in December of 2003, council approved the development agreement for the Gallaudet tract. The development proposal was for a 70 to 75 unit senior retirement center, 38 residential condominiums, and 29 single-family detached homes. The developer, Paul Tatman, has started his engineering and development of the site, and has determined that there needed to be some adjustments in the plans for the condominiums only, not the retirement center or the single-family development. They were originally proposed in a series of fourplexes and duplexes. The new proposal is to maintain the Loop Road, which would be Prairie Wind Circle, but replace the fourplexes with duplexes, and increase the number of them from 38 to 42. There would also be four additional duplex buildings on the south side of Prairie Wind Circle, down on the southwest corner of the lot. We felt that that was a significant enough change to bring it back for new consideration with the Plan Commission and City Council, and so we had a public hearing on that last week. I will note that we have met, staff has met, along with the developer, has met with the neighbors affected immediately to the south, and they are satisfied with the current plans. The new condos will be roughly about 50 to 55 feet from building, from the edge of the building to the edge of the homes in Eagle Ridge. The Plan Commission felt that was satisfactory, did not need any additional landscaping or buffering. There will be a wrought iron fence on the back property line, which the neighbors prefer to any kind of wood screen opaque fence. I'll leave it there. I know Paul Tatman is here, if there's any specific questions of him, but the Plan Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this change.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, our motion would be in order.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's no discussion, will the court please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. And we'll go finally to item number three, under new business, and this is an ordinance amending the Urbana liquor code, package liquor sales under the T2 license, a temporary license. Mr. Holt?
So, October 9th, the Urbana Third Annual Beer Tasting and Chili Cookoff, this is a proposal that would make the big packaged liquor sales available at that. You know, you go to this thing, you have a great time, you spend 50 cents for these half-size cups of beer for sample, and I don't know how many, over 100 samples, 100 different styles of beer. A lot of people have requested that they be able to purchase beer in package form at this thing, when they find something that they like. Under our current T2 licensing, which is the type of license that this type of festival needs to operate under, that is not allowed. So, this is a proposal to basically permit that in this circumstance, and in similar sorts of circumstances. It would be limited to situations where the City of Urbana is a sponsor or cosponsor of the event, and basically would allow the liquor commissioner to establish parameters for the sales of this packaged stuff.
Any questions? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
Just a quick question. Why would we limit this to activities that were only cosponsored by the city? What's the reason behind that? Because it seems like that's kind of, it seems on the outside like that's special treatment.
Well, in fact, it is. The notion is that, I suppose there's a couple rationales. One is that, you know, there's a lot of people who spent a lot of money getting full-scale liquor shops up and into place, which benefits the community tremendously, and to allow just anybody to come in with a temporary license and do some kind of a big thing where it cuts into their business, I thought was not a good idea. So, I propose it this way, in part for that reason. The other aspect of this is that this particular type of license is available for, it's basically made available for not-for-profits, for charitable civic types of organizations. That is, organizations that aren't normally in the sale alcohol type of business. And these include anything from all team to, you know, all kinds of events. We get people, you know, they want to have a fundraiser for their softball team, so they have a dinner and they can sell some beer out of a keg for that. Do we think it's a good idea to start allowing that kind of organization, then to sell also packaged liquor in various quantities of various types? It just didn't seem to make sense to me. So, that's why I proposed it that way. It seemed to make sense that if it's a city-sponsored event, where we have a little bit of control over the overall circumstances, then it would make sense to allow for packaged liquor sales in that kind of a context.
Any other questions? No other questions, a motion would be in order.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the court please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. And with that, further business to come before us this evening, and we stand adjourned. Yeah.